A lot of kids and a lot of wonderful accomplishments. And then we're going to approve our agenda and then we're going to retire to close session to do some interim superintendent anger's review. And then we'll call the session back into order and invite everybody back in. Sound good? But before we get started, if you please join me in the pledge of allegiance, we do have a leg right here.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I just took things out of order. So first, I have to call this particular session to order. Sarah, would you please take the role?
Powerman.
Yes, ma'am.
Hallid, here's Nick Ian.
Here.
Boss.
Here.
Thompson. Here. Tucker. Here. And responsible.
Good evening. Okay, let's jump into item number three, which are, we are Shockley Schools' good news items. And as Jenny aims to start making her way up here, and as she makes her way, I'm going to read a little bit. Our first group we're going to recognize today is Destination Imagination 2018 Global Competition Teams. We'd like to first recognize two community education Destination Imagination teams and their accomplishments this year. The Puntacular Phoenixes? Yes? And flip the switch. In May, both teams headed to Tennessee to compete in the Global's final competition. I'm going to stop there. I'm going to hand the microphone over to Jenny, who knows far more about this than I do. There you go, Jenny.
Thank you. Hi, I just want to give a little background on Destination Imagination. It's run through community ed, but it is an international program that we started or brought to Shockley about six years ago, and it promotes teamwork, problem solving, creativity. And these students worked really, really hard all year. They form teams, they have challenges that they have to solve, and they have to have a challenge based on a category of something like fine arts or engineering. And there are different categories they pick. They literally work with no adults telling them solutions. They have to do it on their own. And they work all year and compete at a regional, and then if they qualify, a state, and then they go on to Global's. And in addition to the big challenge, they have to do instant challenges, which are thinking on your feet type scenarios. And I really believe every adult should go through Destination Imagination because it's just an amazing program. I also want to recognize their managers because they give a ton of their time, and I really, really appreciate it. We could not run this program without managers. So Joan Johnson and Suda are two managers for the Puntacular Phoenixes. We go with the first.
Yes, we do that Puntacular Certificate suitable for framing. However, come on up and we'll get the certificates handed up after that. Please bring the whole board up.
This is Hadija, this is Lindley, and this is Joseph. And that's three of the members. The other three members are out of town or out of the country right now, so they could not attend. And we had a seventh member that couldn't go to Global's finals, so that was our team. And... Okay. And the challenge we did was elementary fine arts. And we... Yep, change of two.
And Lisa Leary is our other rock star manager. And I'm going to let you introduce the candidates. All right, so we have Jenny Harvick, Libby Henderson, Smurfy Arun Kumar, Agrim Joshi, and Carter Smith. And they did the improv challenge, which was Treasure Oh, and Not Here Tonight is Paige Leary, because she's playing soccer as always.
Thank you, Jenny. Next, recognition of our state level competitors. We'd like to start by recognizing one of our high school speech team members that made it to state competition and placed seventh in the discussion category. Where's our state level competitors? Would you like to introduce them?
Okay. I'm Hani Joshi. I'm currently a junior in high school, and I compete in discussion, which is kind of an oddball category for speech. Typically, you think of someone going up in front of an audience and just reciting something or doing a speech by themselves. But in discussion, you sit with a group of competitors, so you're from different schools, and you are given a task that you have to work together to come to a conclusion for whilst competing against each other. So you can imagine how tasky and stressful that can be sometimes. But it's really a fun experience. And because of our amazing coaching and the amazing team that we have at Shockley, I was able to get all the way to state after four years in speech.
Congratulations. All right, let's keep it coming. We had a number of good news items from our athletics side of the activities department, and some state level competitors from the spring sports were able to join us tonight. So let's bring up the adaptive softball. All right, is Julie Phillips here? You want the adaptive softball? All right. Our adaptive softball team led by Coach Julia Phillips had a successful season making it to the C1 Division Championship game, coming up short to St. Cloud Area 8-6 in Extra A's. The Southern Stars finished 12-2 on the season. And we've got a list of players. What's your name, sir?
Andrew.
Andrew, all right, Andrew. What did you like best about this year's adaptive softball team? Hit the ball, bud? Okay, let's bring up girls golf. Coach John Yeller and Sam Lukin.
Lukin.
Lukin. And which one are you, sir? All right. I'm going to let you tell us what happened.
Sam Lukin is our varsity number two player. She's actually in tournament today, so she can't be here. She's a girl who, jellied at the end, shot her career best 78 in the first round of sections. And in the maiden sections in the state tournament, she shot her second two best scores and ended with a tie for 38 in the state. And she ended the conference season off just in all-conference odd event nature. It ended up placing in the group top, so she didn't... So I wish she was here to be here, so that she's playing.
Sam, wherever you're at. Okay, softball. Is Coach Joan here today? Ashley? All right, Coach Ashley, you take the wing.
So the girls varsity Shockley softball, obviously Shockley, but softball team went to Mankato State for a state tournament this school season anyway. For the second time in the last 10 years, and besides that, the last time was in the 80s, so these girls did a phenomenal job getting there. Can I read it to somebody?
Sure.
Okay. All right, put it aside. We got Maddie Black, we got Reese Holsuter, we got Kelsey Cream, Courtney Hogkinson.
First name.
Yeah. Zoe Zander, we got Callier, and then Lydia Barry. These guys, oh my gosh, putting me on the spot. I know you guys. My brain is seriously turned off. Sorry, Emily Sherry, Kayla Rude, Laura Lindell, Kayla Hogkinson. I promise I didn't get scared because I'm turning this off.
All right. Congratulations, ladies. Okay, let's keep it going. Girls track and field. Coach Emily Segma. Girls track and field? Anyone? All right, well, I'll put this off. The girls 4x800 relay team finished ninth place, and Abby Edgar completed the pole routine finishing 14th place at state. So we've got a number of competitors there. How about boys track and field? Led by head coach Zach Haskins? Anyone? Okay, they competed in the 200, 400, and 4x100 relay at state. We've got a number of different placeholders here. I won't even read them all, there's a ton of them. We've got a number of competitors there, and those certificates will be coming in the mail. Now, are there any other athletics or activities groups that are here to be recognized that we have not recognized yet? You seeing nobody? Okay, we're good. Now let's move on to the recognition of academy champions. This is very important. So what are academy champions? Come on up, please. We would also like to thank and recognize our Human Services Academy champions tonight, Bill Reynolds from the City of Shockley and Gary Sheldon from Scott County. Both government entities have graciously stepped up to become academy champions for our Human Services Academy. They bring with them a wealth of knowledge and experiences from each of their organizations that our students will benefit greatly from. We are so happy to have the blessing of the city council of Scott County joining us as academy champions. Let me turn over to you. Can you get it bigger?
Thank you, Chair Swanson. I just want to make a quick comment in the fact that as academy champions, this is a bit of a historic piece nationally for us as the... We are the first academy school in the nation to have both our city and county, or either our city and county, as academy champions with us. So we're thrilled to have Gary and Bill here, and even more thrilled to have the City of Shockley and Scott County partnering with us. And I can honestly say, they have already dove into the pool with us and are working on different projects with us as we speak. And so we're really, really excited about this academy champion partnership with our great city and our great county. So thank you very much and congratulations.
Okay, that's it. All right, now, we are going to move on to item number four, which is the approval of the agenda as presented. We're just going to do this here to speed things along. I would like to entertain a switch, though, Sarah. I'd like to move up 96, 97, and 98, and move them up in place of 91, 92, and 93. And that's only because A from ICS is here, and we can kind of consolidate all four of these items together. Is that all right? And then we also have one more item I believe. Yes, where's that? Oh, here it is. Okay, an additional item?
Yeah, we saw it.
7.1 personnel? All right. Intend a motion to approve the agenda as amended? All right, all of the favors signed by... Gotcha, first a second. All those favors signified by saying aye?
Aye.
All those same sign, the motion carries. All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn the closed session. Yes. All right, Jenny. All of those favors signified by saying aye? Aye, all those same sign, we are adjourned, and we will reconvene after our closed session is over. Thanks. Okay, Sarah, we're going to go ahead and call the open session back in. We'll take another roll.
Okay. Powerman.
Yes, ma'am.
Hallid. Here. Nick Ian.
Here.
Boss.
Here.
Thompson. Here. Tucker. Here. And responsible.
Good evening. Okay, that was item six. We're going to move on to item seven. Before I say that, thank you, everybody, for being patient as we go through tonight's agenda. It's very odd going on out here tonight, so thank you for your patience. Move on to item seven, consent items. Intend a motion to approve consent as presented. It's moved. Any discussion? I have one little discussion item, and that is just our numbering again, it's 7.1. Just a six point, we'll correct that. Otherwise, any other discussion? All those with favors signified by saying aye?
Aye.
All those same sign, motion carries. All right, move on to item eight, old business discussion items. A, you want to come on up? And we are going to go ahead and roll into 96 and 97 right after that, so... This is the south side construction update? That's where we're starting with?
Yeah, we're going to do both south side and high school construction update.
And then change orders after.
And change orders after.
Change orders.
All right, as I mentioned, we'll start with the south side construction update. The first slide I have on here is our phasing diagram, if you guys recall. They're under construction on Phase 1, which consists of eight fields there. And then what was seeded last fall was everything that's highlighted in yellow. And if you can see on the far right-hand side, there is a field here that isn't irrigated, so that was the reason why we were able to seed that as well. So right now, what's left to be seeded is essentially the seven fields there.
Can you go back a slide?
If you want some orientation?
Yeah, I do want.
79 is running up and down.
Okay.
78 is running left to right.
So we've got four full-size soccer football fields, and then four that are smaller than full-size, or is that just the graphic?
I think it's the graphic. We have three that look a little bit off.
Yeah.
We've got the top two and the...
Well, the four that are in a square look like they're not full-size compared to the other, and I have to begin to think it's just the graphic itself.
Yeah, oh, it's just the schematic.
Okay.
So eight fields, one entrance and an exit.
Yep.
With the turn lanes.
Yep, and you've got a gravel pit slash walk-in slash bike path, and then you've got two parking lots.
And two parking lots.
And two ponds, one, but you have to consider some are for runoff.
So I drove by today, so the parking lot is being, is partially...
It just needs to be class five.
It's graded.
Yeah, it's graded, so it has to have class five on it.
Yep.
And then essentially I'll go through the schedule.
Okay, sorry.
So the underground irrigation again is 100% complete. The storm sewer is about 85% complete. If you're out there, you probably saw the machinery.
Yep.
Kind of down at the bottom area of the pond there. So they're working on the 15% left of the storm sewer, with the exception to the county road work that storm sewer will be done this week. And then like you mentioned, the class five will be put in the next couple of weeks for the parking lot, and then the bike pathways and walkways. And then we're waiting on Shockley Public Utilities to install their electrical so we can fire up the irrigation. So once the irrigation is available, then we'll seed the rest of the fields here. So that's what's holding us up on seeding the rest of the fields. And then the light poles, the light poles will be the last thing installed probably first thing of August.
And how many fields will be lit?
It's pretty much the entire pathways. Pretty much pathways.
Just not the fields.
Based on where I see the light pole bases, it's mostly just the pathways.
So you said the yellow reflects what has already been seeded?
Those lights, because you see the last fall grass.
And the gray reflects, it has actually been seeded?
It hasn't been seeded yet.
Has not at all?
Waiting for the irrigation.
Can you, okay, just do the irrigation.
Yeah, we got to wait for the irrigation to be turned on, so once we have the power there, then we'll seed it, so then we can...
Time table?
For irrigation?
Yeah.
We're waiting for spucks. So spucks, we got the forms. I sent the form to Jeff. We just signed off on them, so they're working on the installation, so I'd say late July.
Which probably means fall of next year before we can anticipate.
Right, so best case scenario, so we seed, we'd seed either late July, early August, and then wait the full season. So the best case scenario would be looking at fall of 2019. Worst case scenario, we would have to wait for like spring of 2020. And then, so the field that's holding us up is the county road work, it'll be better approved, but again, we won't have access to that space still. So that'll probably occur spring of next 2019. And I just got a couple of updates again. If you were out there, you'd see some of these shots, but I'm just giving you some an idea. So if you look at the bottom corner, that's kind of where you're standing, and you're looking out at the top two fields there. And here's where you probably saw the activity going on with the storm sewer. So again, the circle, showing the last field in the construction access there. And this is a shot looking at your bigger parking lot. And then your shot looking at the five fields. And a shot of looking at the bike path at Long County Road 78. And then a shot of the new, one of the new ponds off of 79. And then the shot of what would be your access to the fields from 79. And then the last shot for south side is one of the new ponds on the north side there. So we'll get, we'll contract all the, because they're responsible for mowing and maintaining the field prior to turning it over to our, to us substantial condition.
Including overseeing everything that they might need to do.
Yes, yeah. What happens is the landscape architect comes up and they say it's established grass. And that's when they turn it over to us for maintenance.
So right now, like when I drive by, I see lots of long grass.
Yeah, that's what needs to be maintained. That was, that was the stuff that was seeded before.
Okay, so it's just not able to be cut yet because it's not established?
Well, no, they can. They're supposed to maintain it, so they will be doing that. Any other questions on south side before I move over to the high school?
Good, just to make a point, we're still on track with the time limit established.
All right, moving on to the high school. Again, the renderings and the before renderings and our current progress. So if you can see, this is our new front entrance, and all of the exterior work is pretty much done with exception to the new front vestibule there on the more left-hand side. So mid-July is when we're going to, we're going to install the curtain wall for the new vestibule. That's our timeline there. And here's a shot of our studio space. Again, on the new Arts and Communication wing, adjacent to the front entrance there. So they're going to start installing the cusical panels this week. They'll clear out everything. They're kind of using it as staging space right now. They'll clear that out this week, and then they'll install the projection screen this late next week. Here's another shot.
Will those windows be blackout windows for it?
They will have curtains.
Yeah, but I mean like pretty dark curtains or just...
They will have a little.
Well, not, huh? They're black.
They won't be transparent, that's the question.
Well, I just want to make sure the space can get dark and then...
Yeah, there's a percentage, called percentage openness.
Yeah.
So I have to look at it, but it's going to be 10% openness. So here's a shot looking at where the bleachers would be. And so mid-July, that's when they'll be starting to install the wood flooring. It takes about 10 days installation, five days to cure. So at the end of July, that's when the bleachers will start going in, and then the first part of August will be the curtains, so that'll be the last of this space.
And for the benefit of everybody watching, those are retractable seats and retractable ride curtains.
Resess. You can maximize the space. And here's a shot of our, so within the Arts and Communication wing, you've got on the lower level, top right is your science rooms. So you can see that the only thing really left there is the flooring, and will be done in the next couple of weeks. And then on the bottom right, that's probably the best corner spot classroom there, that's our computer suite classroom. Yeah, that's windows, forward ceiling on the north side, and we've got the most of windows on the east side as well. So yeah, it's the best view, in my opinion. So they'll start bringing the tables in, the science class tables in, and furniture after the 4th of July.
That's in the communications room?
Arts and Communication.
Okay.
And our broadcasting booth. Again, the only thing that's left in here is ceiling grid and carpet left, so that'll probably occur right after 4th of July. And those are sound isolation booths that you're looking at right now. And then to the right, that's actual window from the broadcasting. You'll see on the next slide what you would see. Doesn't really portray, but it's all finished, and the ceilings, the ceilings in there, so carpet and case, which is the only thing that's left in actual broadcasting area. And then you get into the corridor slash lobby spaces. So this is your east entrance to the studio space and auditorium. And you see they're progressing with wall tile and drywall finishes. Here's a shot at here, it's called your west entrance. And a lot of, they're working on the, finishing the rocking ticket for the big radius. It's off there. They started tiling the walls, and discuss on the other side. And they're going to start installing what we call prefabricated insulated panels. Remember on the athletics side, those red panels? They're going to start installing them over here, not the red, but it's going to be a different color mid-July.
They went to the last four, I guess, if I failed to realize we still had.
So this is the old front entrance here. So they're, they're grating right now, so they're cleaning up the old terrazzo, so where it finishes and ties into, they're jumping mid-July for the... Along the ceiling, so then carpet will be first part of August. Be one of the last appointments in here. Then if you look into the auditorium, if, this week they'll finish installing the rigging. They're starting to install the lights, as you can see on the ceiling grid there. They'll start staying the concrete for the raised seating areas. That'll be occurring here in the next two weeks, so first part of July. They'll start, they'll install seating mid-July. And handrails and projection screens will go in third week of July. Stage form will be the end of July, and then curtains will be the last part in first week of August.
Can you remind me that's...
350.
And the current auditorium is 800. And the studio stage is 100.
And here's your exterior shot. Pretty much everything complete, with exception to the new retaining wall there, if you see on that corner, you see where the piles appear, that's where they're pouring the new retaining wall. Pretty much all the curtain wall is up, the coping and the roofing is up as well.
Is that filled in behind? Is it level there or is there the retaining wall?
Retaining wall?
Yeah, it's filled in behind, so it's level with their...
Top of the retaining? Yeah, so it'll be for the exiting. Yeah, right now, this is just, this is just excavated to, so they can pour the retaining wall.
Right, and ask you, inside here, is this filled or is there a gap behind it?
There is a...
Recession?
Yeah, there is. Any other questions? And then a shot into the band room there. So that's the exterior shot rendering, and then on the right-hand side, you have two views, as you can see all the cusical panels up now, just after the offices, the paint yet, and then the projection screens will come in after July 4th. And then the flooring will be coming in mid-July, so this is actually a nice wood flooring that goes in here. Next slide is our south tower. And what you see on the picture itself is you see there's a outdoor curricular activity space that they're pouring retaining wall for. That's what you see kind of on the bottom side of the picture there. Another shot of the south tower, so this is the entrances to the academies. You can see the progress, framing walls, mechanical electrical plumbing roughens, and then the drywall will start taking place mid-July. Here's a shot of hometown banks, so they're pretty much wrapped up here. Only thing left here is signage, the accordion wall that secured entrance, and then some of the iron bobles were that needed to take place.
They took down the...
No, they didn't, no.
Trying to get that picture.
I had to. I was creative. So it's still unclued. That's why I have to go a little off.
Yeah, all right.
Yes, the wall is still up there. And then the new east tower and administration spaces. So again, exterior portion of the work is pretty much wrapped up, with exception to our marquee sign on the right-hand side there. And then some shots of the new east tower, which is, we're on the freshman academy, and then our first level is our special ed spaces. So the big picture is the physics labs within the freshman academy. Top right is your freshman academy entrance, and then bottom right is what we call the resource area, so corridor. Here's a shot of the engineering manufacturing lab. The rendering was done a while back. We did make some modifications based on user groups, so that's why it's, rendering doesn't match up with the construction there, but it's essentially... Here's a shot of the engineering manufacturing lab, the rendering was done a while back, we did make some modifications based on user groups, so that's why it's, rendering doesn't match up with the construction there, but it's essentially two rooms, we call it clean room and a dirty room for fabrication of engineering. And then my last slide here is a shot in front of the server space, so that's all getting remodeled. Kind of see the, what used to be the choir room is now the hall of art and exiting space. So right now, they're doing mechanical, electrical, underground work, building fill-up floor next week. And then they start doing the wall frame again, above ground mechanical, electrical after July fourth. Questions?
So Reggie question.
It's on time.
On time with the budget?
On time with the budget, yes.
We are, obviously now that.
It looks like a long wait.
You'll, you'll see how fast they give it, finishes and tile work, it's amazing how.
So I look at some of those pictures, I think, August?
It's aggressive, it's our typical summer slam.
Can you remind me, in the commons, there's the cafe, the, our signature spaces, there's the cafe, there's the, um.
Union Cafe, the coffee.
Coffee shop?
Coffee, culinary arts, and then innovation hub, and then fab lab.
Yeah, fab lab.
Fab lab.
What do they do in the fab lab?
Curriculum, or maybe fancy here.
Fabricate, fancy stuff?
It's, it's pretty much like engineering, yeah.
It's an engineering lab?
Big prototypes, big examples, big.
Okay.
Models.
Well, I see them working on it, I just don't know if they just developed that.
That's why, that space is completely, they're just waiting for the new furniture to come in.
Okay.
Yeah, I think to Reggie's point, to Reggie's point earlier, floor is a part of the building, it's a little concerned.
Just the entrance.
Just the. Part everybody walks through. So, but I trust on time, on budget, or not doing it, but it's far away.
Alright.
Thank you very much. So we'll take on to, um.
Change order.
Nine point six, nineteen and twenty, and then change order number four for a little bit. And we'll take action on Monday then, if that's right.
So number nineteen is first, and I believe number nineteen has to do with some LTFM work. That is painting the existing lockers, that used to be red, if you recall, and we're painting them gray. And that was the majority of that change order, and then we also had some into radiation and curtain wall details that we worked on as well. The bulk of change order number nineteen.
Say that accounted about the LTFM component for anybody who's.
So LTFM is long-term facilities maintenance, so that's a new, it's a different funding mechanism, but we wanted to keep it within this contract because of warranties and, and working with one contact with warranties.
It's an advantageous way to keep the work done, in the most cost-efficient manner, but tapping into LTFM dollars as opposed to.
And not having to quote it out to, expedite the work.
Yeah.
A lot of there is, you save money with mobilization of other crews coming in.
Great.
We appreciate you doing that.
Do we need a motion approved? Yep, we do. I'll make the motion to approve.
I'm excited.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, same sign, motion carries. Alright, number twenty.
Number twenty, same, same concept, LTFM work, this is for painting the existing corridors and sockets. Again, funded by LTFM, long-term facility maintenance, again, same concept, working in with a new, same contractor, warranty, and expediting the work for the summer.
Any discussion here?
We saved like thirty-one thousand dollars by not having to mess as much with the main entry, the office.
With, uh, reconfiguration.
Administration, yeah.
Existing administration spaces.
So I, I want to apply, I don't just, you know, let that job.
Okay.
Say, just the, the high school staff are working with us on that, that's great, they were as flexible as they were to say just some money.
Alright, anything to approve, change order number twenty?
I'll make that motion.
Awesome.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sign, motion carries. Number one to nine point eight, change order number four.
Yeah, so that's our low voltage work, that's our big package for all the low voltage work. And what happened was, we were ahead of schedule in what we call some of the area R or the counselor spaces. So instead of waiting for phase two, to, we were able to, we wanted to move in there faster, so instead of waiting for phase two, we implemented it in phase one. So that's why it's a change order, so we're ahead of schedule, so it's a good change order that we wanted to get ahead and move in with spaces. So they can utilize them.
But this is actually an item for the high school budget.
Yes.
As opposed to LTFM, seven thousand dollars, but it's gonna get that, but.
Yeah, okay. And again, it's really just taken out of the budget from phase two into phase one.
Right.
Transferring it.
Transferring it.
Absolutely.
I'll make that motion.
Alright, second, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, that motion carries as well. Alright, that's it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna back up to. Item number nine point one, Academy's of Shakopee Champions.
Yeah, well, and we just, we've already recognized them, but the recommended action is to approve Scott Colley and the City of Shakopee as our Human Services Academy Champions, as presented, we already thanked them for, for that, and so we just, I'd recommend a motion on the table for approval.
I would make that motion.
Second. Any discussion?
Just I'm very grateful, as I'm sure we all are, but it's really cool to have both the city and the Academy. And this is, we identified them early on as a target for this, just made a lot of sense. And it's just really great, and we really appreciate them doing that, they're a wonderful part.
Well, our city administrator, yeah, our city administrator said tonight that he believes it's maybe one of the kind of the nation to have the partnership that we have with.
We're the only Ford NGL connected school district to have a city as, as champion.
That's great.
That's great.
Awesome.
That's great.
Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Okay, move on, nine point four, Ford NGL Phase Four Agreement.
Yep, nine point two, I'll run with this one.
Nine point two? Can I say eight point two?
I'm recommending the, the continued relationship with Ford NGL. I've been negotiating prices with them for the services that they provide for us on a yearly basis. I'll give you an example of something they just did was some academy and team training with all of our ninth through twelfth grade teachers in their new teams that they're gonna be working with. And the training was outstanding, I participated in it for the freshman academy. So here are, we listed the outcomes of what's called Phase Four implementation. And it's to strengthen the community-wide capacity to implement and continuously improve our master plan. Implement the system structures, processes, and competencies to support and sustain continuous improvement with all key individuals and groups engaged, inspire, share, and contribute to the Ford NGL network. We've got a bunch of staff out there at their national conference on Ford NGL's bill, right now, we're not paying for it. And so we get visits from them throughout the year, virtual support at any time, and I can tell you, we, you know, I just spoke with one of our Ford NGL leaders last week for some support on some things. Virtual meetings, designated facilitation support for annual retreats with them, ongoing mentoring, onboard support, consultation is needed. Access to network learnings and innovations around the country with the Driven Transformation Model. And our hope is that it won't be too long until we are facilitating some of these meetings at our own sites and bringing new people in to see the great things we're gonna be doing at, at the Shakopee schools. So my recommended action to you is to approve our Phase Four implementation with them, which would occur this year at the price of twenty-four thousand dollars. And next year at the price of twenty-four thousand dollars, which again is a negotiated fee considering our financial situation. I took several, several efforts to get to that level.
Questions, comments, we're here?
Well, I appreciate that because I know this number was higher when we initially entered into our, yeah, when we initially entered into our partnership, so I appreciate your efforts to get that level for us.
I appreciate Ford for working with that, is that wrong?
Yeah, I do too.
I'll make the motion. Second, Tony, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, that motion carries. Okay, move on to nine point three, the approval of Shakopee High School's new master schedule recommendation.
Yep, and I'll take that one too, and this has been a great process. We've had a committee of teachers and administrators and school board members talking about what is going to be the best model for us at the high school for our schedule in the, starting in the nineteen-twenty school year. So we did this work ahead, a year ahead of time, and fell on the four-by-four block schedule. We talked about this a lot at learning session, and so again, my recommended act, action is that the school board adopts the four-by-four block schedule for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year.
Okay, heard the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Second, any further discussion?
I was a part of this process. I was at virtually every meeting, and I, I wanna thank our teachers and our leadership team for coming together to solve what was a problem for us. It was a contractual problem, it was also a perceived problem, and I really, really appreciate the work that they did. And I will tell you that their guiding principle was what is best for kids, so I'm, I'm pretty grateful.
It was a really sticky issue in that it's been resolved through a lot of different combining of people and input, I think it's really important.
But the, the meetings were very robust.
I'm sure they were.
Gary, I have a request, and that is that, I'll address it to you, but your staff. Keep the board appraised, and I guess the community, keep the board appraised on how they resolved some of those questions that we had.
Yeah.
We know that this is, no system's perfect, and we identified a few things in terms of gaps, if you take, you know, a CAS course in this core, in this.
AP.
Or AP, I guess, AP testing. But I'm just talking about, it could be a gap between the next time that the following course is offered, those kinds of things, we're gonna learn from other districts. I'd like to have us appraised of how that's progressing and maybe what some of the solutions are, so if you can just proactively remember to bring them back to us as an update, and that's just maybe have Jeff or Nancy or whoever come in and just say, hey, look, here's how we're addressing it.
And we actually have all the, we'll have the ones that we've identified bulleted, so as we come up with solutions, that would be great.
I'd ask them to bring that.
Yeah.
Great. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, that motion carries. Director Gray, you wanna come on up, talk to both of the negotiations update?
So before you do the C P, we have a tentative agreement that you'll be voting on this evening with our principals group. Some of the highlights of that particular settlement are, they, this group, we had ten individuals leaving this group this year because of some of our budget adjustments, and they wanted to take some of their package and have it be implemented in this year in particular to address those individuals, and the rest of the payments then come in the following year. And then also, this group agreed to remove auto and phone allowance from their contracts for next year, because we've already really implemented those this year. And then also in their contract, in many of our district contracts, was the idea that you could allocate sick leave to someone else, and that is not allowable by law, so we removed that. I will say though, the district, in terms of insurance, we went out for a proposal, or, or, you know, did on short-term disability, which we think can meet some of the needs that were needed to be addressed here. So we actually got enough people to sign up for that, to have that program this year, so we do have short-term disability in play as well. Our target was to try and come in at the same percentages as teachers, and we did that at four point two-three. No increase on insurance for both years, so it's just the same, continues at the same rate of, for those health insurance benefits. Any questions?
Just one, kind of adding on to what you're saying, the ten people who are in the bargaining unit are going back into the teacher's unit because they are, the assistant principals who are converting to deans, deans are TOCs.
We actually had, so, you know, officially, their positions were eliminated. We did, through the budget process, say that we were gonna have some deans in some of those buildings at various levels of FTE related to how many students were in each of those buildings. And then those people interviewed for it, we actually had one more person than there were positions available. Good news, bad news, good news is two of our staff members who were in that situation actually have, one got a elementary principal license position, and another one got another assistant position in another school district, so. And I'm sure, I'm sure there are other people working on some of those at this point too, but that's where we are at this point.
Other comments for Keith?
I don't wanna address it here, because we don't need to, but as I recall, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, part of the reason we went to APs a few years ago was because of the state mandate relative to teacher. So now that we're doing with the APs, I would like to understand how our principals slash deans that are gonna be asked to participate in that, how we're gonna handle that, because that's a lot of work. The state didn't fund it, it's just more unfunded mandate, and so we did the APs for that reason, now we're moving away from it, so I just wanna know how we can handle that workload going forward.
And that's a great point that, I think we'll talk about in retreat as to how do we ensure that evaluation is, is gonna be happening.
Yeah, because we still want to be robust, and yet we don't wanna burden a principal with seventy of these, there's been a lot of that going on.
Alright, other questions for Keith? It's now about making motion to approve. Alright.
I'll second.
Second, any further discussion?
Thank you for working on this.
Yes, thanks.
Exactly.
They're a good group.
They're a good group to work with.
Good. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Alright, nine point five, approval of District twenty-eighteen, twenty-eighteen budget, Jeff, welcome.
I'll walk right over to your.
They're trying to make it faster. Alright, well, we'll be asking you to approve the budget for the eighteen, nineteen school year.
Should be coming up any second.
Eighteen, alright.
Right, exactly.
Got it.
Yep, you'll have to just kind of, there you go.
Sure, okay. Um, and as we talked about, the fiscal year, the district commences on July one. And the board, by law, has had a budget adopted for the upcoming fiscal year prior to, prior to July one. So, certainly wanna comment that the board, this, we're asking you to adopt, but you've had several presentations, other discussions. I think the numbers that you're seeing here, the, we're asking you to adopt, are really consistent with what you've seen, I would say from the time I started making presentations for this eighteen, nineteen school year back in April. Probably one, one adjustment that you have seen is that we're going to reserve the sale of, the land sale. And so you, and that's reflected in the projected fund equity for Fund One. Couple slides later, I've kind of got a breakdown of how the general fund plays out, but I think that's certainly a highlight of this budget, when you see that we're going to add one point eight million dollars to the fund equity for, for the general fund. And then, just comments on the, couple of the other governmental funds, food service, community service. They've got positive fund balances, and, and that's a great thing. They don't have to be large fund balances, but you just wanna have a, a positive equity balance in most of the funds. Because if you're in the red, then you're going to ask that, then you're gonna have to have the general fund subsidy house, goes to food service and community services. Good thing that they're positive, positive situation, the projection for, at the end of June thirty, is it the end of this fiscal year or June thirty, twenty nineteen? Uh, the building destruction, as you know, we're, looks like a big deficit, it is, but that's what should happen when you add bond funds. And that just simply reflects the winding down of that high school project, so, which'll wrap up. Move into that building in September, so, so we see a little bit of revenue on the, a little bit of interest revenue and then expenses to complete that project. And then the debt service fund, those funds are, can only be used to, to pay the principal on interest on our, on our bonded debt. And the revenue that you see there is simply the property tax levy. And the revenue that you see there is simply the property tax levy, um, enable us to make those payments on the money.
Can I tell you, I appreciate this form?
Yep, because you have a beginning balance.
Yes. I know, I know, we've seen supplemental forms.
I do too, so I don't have to sit here and say.
Yes, thank you. It'll be part of this.
Yeah, and I think that in the slide where I've got fund balances, I'm also showing the.
Thank you.
Beginning, so we can track through them, uh, to change this. So then we've got our proprietary funds, the internal service is our, uh, self-funded health insurance, health and dental plan, um, ending with a positive fund balance of 22,000, uh, fiduciary funds, just maybe comment on the whole P M trust. Those are actually, those were, they're set aside general fund dollars. Um, and what we use those dollars for is to pay the, um, to pay the benefits for, for retirements. And if we didn't have this trust in place, suppose it all be general fund expenditures. So that's just, um, kind of a, nice thing to be able to have that trust that we can tap into and not tap into general fund dollars for those expenses.
Thanks for saying that, Jeff. I don't think people appreciate the fact that this is a $5 million.
Kind of big deal.
Savings account we have, even though it's for dedicated purpose, but that's because we created it and pulled it out of general fund.
Right.
Otherwise it would be in general fund, basically nobody seems to appreciate.
Set aside from the general. So here's the other, Sean, I think maybe this is better, bill you had this day. So general fund equity components. And we talk about that 1.8 million dollar surplus. Um, you can see where it's going to, um, where those dollars shake out into the different funds. So the, um, as important as that restricted operating, which reflects the, a land sale. Um, and so the restrict, right in the middle there, the restricted operating capital run 1.2. I think the first one there, the on assign, um, that's a pretty healthy jump there from assign, we're projecting at the end of this year, 943 up to, um, up to 1.5. So that's kind of the direction we want to go. We want to keep going, uh, but that's, um, what's good for, for this year's budget. And then, uh, some of the other kind of restricted, uh, funds, um, non-sustainable pre-pays, assigned tech devices, you can see the, uh, the changes there from, from year to year. On the, on the negative, um, you know, those eventually work their way into a positive situation, um, both relatively, uh, well, the L T F M, um, it, they're kind of new sources of revenue and so sometimes what happens is, um, you start spending the dollars before you actually have the, so the funding trails and eventually, um, those catch up. So they have dedicated funds, so you don't worry too much about the fact that you've got some, uh, negative balances there.
And L T F M is a acronym for long-term.
Long-term facilities, I think Amy mentioned that when he was at, long-term facilities maintenance revenue. And you actually approve a plan when we bring that into line. You approve the plan, uh, how we're going to use those dollars and then ultimately the Department of Education approves as well. Um, I'm not going to go through the annual report that we put together. Um, I think you've all had a chance to, or got it out too. We also took that report to our CFAC group, um, last week. So it's just laid out with our account structure and then some of the, uh, and then the, front of the report is, are the assumptions. So I just wanted to kind of throw those out here. These aren't probably what I call the significant revenue budget assumptions and they're in the annual report for all funds, pages five through 11. Uh, but this is just looking at key components in the general fund. So, um, basic general education, A, 6,000, set at 6,312. Um, you know, some years will come here and, and we will not have legislative action completed, so we'll take a shot at it. This is current law, so we know that it's, it's set at, at 6,312. Um, the operating referendum levy said at 300 times. Um, I didn't explain what, what WOTM is there. So it's weighted average daily membership. Um, essentially it's, uh, where you use the weighting might be at the secondary level where a 1.0 student actually generates 1.2, um, in terms of WOTMs.
So those are our kids.
Our kids.
Yes, those are the kids.
Yes, those are our kids.
We live our lives.
These are the funding components that are attached to those kids.
Yes.
So they're all in, uh, projected ADM, another budget assumption, 8,317, projects to WOTMs of 9,120. So again, those are the key revenue components. Um, questions, comments? Again, we've already seen this several times.
And I'll just make a quick comment to the public. These, um, that middle number in particular, if you want to go back to that, fluctuates based on things that have been approved within districts. So the amount of money that we actually get per kid is very different than, uh, than our neighbors. And in future months, we'll share some of those, uh, some of that data with you just so you can see where we compare with local, you know, other neighbors and, uh, and comparable sized districts with comparable, comparable, uh, demographic numbers to ours.
I think this is the third time we've seen this particular budget, um, that you brought it to us. And so we've had a lot of time to digest it, absorb it, understand it. And I, I want to thank you for the work that you've done. I know that you found some areas of savings for us. I know that, um, you've worked really hard on creating this budget and making sure that not only it's balanced, but that we have a surplus at the end of the year. And I, I can't deny how much I appreciate that.
Thank you.
So Angela and I were, uh, represented board with the CFAC on Tuesday last week. And of course that's the body, you guys know we establish to provide, they're experts, they're accountants and auditors and that sort of thing. And they were supportive of this. They actually didn't have a lot of comments, it seemed very, fairly straightforward to them. There was no what about or gee, have they thought of it? It was just sort of rolled out to them to see what makes sense. So I'm pleased that we got affirmation and validation from that group as well.
I just want to throw out that I haven't had a high level of confidence in a budget, I guess, for a while, uh, for all those reasons. You have put in so much work and your team has that, um, I feel really good about this particular budget where you got your numbers, that things have been really, really heavily scrutinized. So I just want to call that out, that, uh, confidence is priceless and I hope that, uh, this all executes, uh, as expected, so our, so our public can also have, you know, enjoy that high degree of confidence as well. So thanks.
But we wanted to wait until now so that we had the most accurate numbers that we could possibly have.
Okay, there's nothing else. I'm interested in motion to approve the 2018, 19 budget as presented.
I'll make my motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Full same sign. Motion carries.
All right. Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, we'll jump on to item 10, actually 10 wants specifically, evaluation summary for interim superintendent Gary Anger. District Chair Matt, can you take it over here?
Yeah, thanks, sir. Um, so the reason we were in a closed session for the first hour was that we had a, it's our, our performance valuation of our superintendent. It's the opportunity where we get to all share our thoughts and come together with board feedback. Uh, we also utilized some 363 feedback, um, of all different positions in the district, not just, um, principals or cabinet members who are direct reports, but teachers, custodians, food service, all told, Keith checked my numbers, what, five to 10, 110 responses?
Yes.
Um, and overall the scores were, were very good, very positive. Uh, Gary's had a very good year. Our biggest, biggest priority when he came on board, um, he portrayed this in the interview process. He is a culture leader and our cultural scores are quite strong along with our credibility and customer service. Fantastic, that's been a huge focus of Gary for this year. Um, so he, he knocked it out of the park. Great feedback across the board. So we've, we've seen great things there. Now after his first year, it's going to be the challenge to shift forward and maintain growth of culture while not having it be all encompassing or all, all inclusive of his calendar. So now he gets to keep, continue to help build the culture, but also spend some more time on the operations of, of the job as superintendent. Any other comments on that? Overall, very, very positive feedback and, um, yeah, great year. We look forward to things to come in the future here. We will be, uh, in a summer retreat setting goals, working to set goals for the district and the superintendent next year.
Thanks, Matt. You have more work waiting. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
All right.
I want to thank everybody that took the time to reply and give feedback, read every single comment, um, looked over every rating and, uh, and I just feel very fortunate to be the interim superintendent here in the Chakka schools, so thank you.
Okay, item number 11, new business action items. Uh, is Reggie, well, I'm going to use here, uh, Reggie would like to talk about district policy updates.
Accretive for policy.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
They excited?
I'll be back. It's getting good.
Um, so actually you guys are keenly aware of the materials that we sent to the board about a whole series of policies spanning several different series, 300, 400, et cetera. Uh, we do have an update as of tonight, so this is breaking news. Um, as into our policy update, MSBA comes out periodically and says, oh, by the way, we need to make some further updates and further revisions. And that affected some of the ones that we actually were prepared to do first reading on tonight. So, uh, if you're, if you're playing along, um, the following of the group that we told you to review and that we were going to do first reading tonight, these are being polled. Figured going to go back and, and revisit them in light of the changes that they've been made. So it's 414, 509, 524, 525, 614, and 903 are being polled from our first reading tonight. All right? So the, the committee will get these from Sarah when she's had a chance to disseminate these. We will bring them back as we move on to the next chunk for the policy committee will work on this. But as far as the policies that are left, as I put to you guys in a note, um, really we're just adopting, uh, the changes being recommended by MSBA. There's really not too many substantive things, but as I explained to you guys, we asked a lot of questions, we followed up. Probably one of the most common questions was, did this policy change? Are we already aligned with it? And the answer is yes. Or does it create new responsibilities for the district that we need to be aware of? And the answer was, in some cases, yes. Most of the cases, no. But we're aligned with everything. I think, uh, the only one that we are in the process of catching up on is this requirement, which is kind of interesting. Janie's sitting here with, uh, required training for AED and CPR sometime in the 7th and 12th. It's been optional, but now it's actually something we have to provide, um, for students somewhere in that window. We will comply with that. And then there were a few policies that we, we chose not to bring forward tonight that were going to require some additional work on our part. So we didn't just take these, carte blanche, and just say, yeah, there they are. So what I'm, both, there's no action being taken tonight unless we are, you know, we are going to actually, uh, accept these as first reading. So it's the first reading of the policies minus those, and Matt will bring them to speak, uh, those that we're pulling because of additional changes. Do you have any questions? If you had a chance to look at these and kind of my summary and some of the questions that we asked and covered, but we will, uh, seek to approve these at our next decision.
I don't have any questions, just out of curiosity, those that need to be polled.
Yep. I've not seen them?
Yeah, I haven't seen them.
No, I have to be, you got this yesterday?
Uh, Friday.
Okay, Friday. So it's, it's been so recent that we haven't even had a chance to look at them. Chances are, much like the ones we're reviewing, it's going to be, oh, statute X is this or some date's changed, but if there's anything substantive, obviously we'll take a look. But we didn't.
Sorry, interrupt your, Reggie. It looks as though there are three of the, of the six that have legislative recommended changes and three have non-substantive changes.
So rather than just make an assumption, we think it's better to pull them off the back here.
Totally understood.
So my recommendation is that we accept the ones that I did not highlight as being polled as a first reading as presented.
They marked them, I'm assuming Sarah, you got those marked?
I do.
All right. Uh, can I take a motion to accept the selected policies, uh, and they accept them as a first reading as presented?
I'll make, I'll second.
All right, any further discussion?
I just want to say thanks to the committee, uh, inclusive of people who are not in the room like Ed Cox, who's really doing a lot of work on the superintendent's here. So, you know, you take, take these seriously and read them and think about them, discuss them.
As well as, it's been a great experience for you to join the board and get to dive right into policy after policy.
Educational policy, that's what I like.
Very good.
No problem there.
Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Full same sign. And that motion carries. All right, move on to 11.2. Uh, this is the November 6, 2018 general election resolutions. And, uh, you're going to take it over here?
Yep. Um, it's the time of year that we have to call for the election for the school board. We have two resolutions that we need to approve tonight. The first is a resolution relating to the calling of the election and the second is a resolution establishing, establishing the dates for filing the affidavit of candidacy. And, um, just so that I don't mess this up, I'm just going to read it. My apologies, it's not short. Uh, however, the full, um, versions of all of these are on our website and in Word Book for anybody that wants to look. But, however, the following resolutions relating to the November 6, 2018 general election will be presented tonight. Number one, it is necessary for the school district to hold its general election for the purpose of electing four school board members for terms of four years each. Number two, the general election is hereby called and directed to be held in conjunction with the state general election on Tuesday, the 6th of November, 2018. The, now, this is the next resolution for establishment dates for filing affidavits of candidacy. Number one, the period for filing affidavits of candidacy for the office of school board member of independent school district number 720 shall begin on July 31st, 2018 and shall close on August 14th, 2018. An affidavit of candidacy must be filed in the office of the school district clerk and the $2 filing fee paid prior to 5:00 PM on August 14th, 2018. So, um, my recommend, my recommended action is to approve these two resolutions.
I still move.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Full same sign. Motion carries. Okay, move on to 11.3. Sean, you want to pick it up?
Yep. Um, in the, um, establishing of the general election resolutions, we, or, Sarah, thank you, did some date placing, uh, because there are certain statutes and rules we have to follow regarding, um, the election. And in that process, we found out that one of our school board, um, meetings is being held right now on November 12th, which is Veterans Day, and we are not allowed to hold a school board meeting on Veterans Day. However, um, there's a mitigating factor in that, um, we have to, um, approve the, um, resolution to, um, to canvas and to certify the election between three and 10 days after the general election and the general election is on the 6th. So we have to have a board meeting during that 10-day period, uh, to certify the election and therefore, uh, we are recommending that we move the meeting from November 12th, which is a Monday on Veterans Day. We can't hold it that day to the 13th, which is the Tuesday of the next day. So we'll have to change our board calendar.
I'll make that motion. Further discussion? All of us say we got to do what we got to do?
You got to do.
Okay, yes. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Full same sign. That great, as new. Thank you. Okay. Then 11.4, uh, approval of non-renewal of coaching contract. Invite up, uh, I want to invite up Director Gray and interim superintendent Anger, they're going to go ahead and lead us up.
Uh, before you is a resolution, um, so I think all of you have a copy of the resolution. I'll read it. Whereas independent school district number 720 entered into a contract with Bruce Kuya to be the head varsity basketball coach at Chakka Pidai School for the 2017-18 school year, and whereas the basketball season has ended and the coaching contract for the position of head varsity basketball coach has expired, and whereas the administration of school district has made a recommendation to the school board that the coaching contract not be renewed at the conclusion of the 2017-18 school year, now therefore be it resolved by the school board of independent school district 720 as follows, that pursuant to Missoula Statute Section 122A, point 33, the coaching contract of Bruce Kuya as head varsity basketball coach will not be renewed. the coaching contract of Bruce Couillard as head varsity basketball coach will not be renewed at the close of the current 2017-2018 school year. That written notice be sent to Bruce Couillard regarding the non-renewal of his coaching contract as required by law, and that said notice be in the form set forth in Exhibit A attached here, too. That written notice attached here, too, as Exhibit A, shall be signed by the superintendent of the school district and served upon Bruce Couillard in a manner determined by the administration of Independent School District number 720.
And should, should this resolution be adopted by our school board? This is, and I want to make it clear, this is an administrative decision, notice of non-renewal. The following letter will be sent to Mr. Couillard. Dear Mr. Couillard, you are hereby notified at a regular, at a regular meeting of the School Board of Independent School District 720, held on June 25, 2018, a resolution was adopted by a majority vote to not renew your coaching contract as head varsity boys' basketball coach for the upcoming 2018-19 school year pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 122A.33. A copy of the resolution is attached. Your advice that you may request the reasons for your non-renewal. The request must be submitted in writing to the superintendent. Your further advice that following your receipt of a written explanation of the reasons for a non-renewal, you may request the opportunity to be heard before the school board at a meeting to be opened or closed at your election, unless the meeting is closed to discuss private data pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 13D.05. A request to be heard by the school board must be provided to the superintendent in writing, including advising the superintendent if you wish to be heard at an open or closed meeting, and I'll be the signer of that document. And I also want people to know here that they are welcome to make comments during our open communication period at the end of the, of the meeting here tonight. So our ask is for the board to consider the documents that Keith read.
Just so I'm clear from a process standpoint, this is an administrative recommendation that has come forth from the superintendent. And what this action tonight would be to affirm that for the purposes of setting up the appeal process.
If, if there's any interest in the appeal process.
Just want to make sure I had that timeline or the process. And a question for Keith. Can you speak to the, just the formality, if you will, of this particular resolution? Traditionally, when there's an activities position or a coaching position, these items will fall under consent item as what a non-renewal. Can you speak to specifically why we have to take this particular action?
Well, there, if we refer back to Minnesota Statute 122A.33 specifically as a, a, a series of actions that you take related to release of a, of a, of a coach. I'm thinking probably many of the coaches that we have have either decided not to be back, have decided to resign. But in terms of the state statute, that's this particular language, and it has, it has a process which you are indeed following.
And how long is that statute?
It's been, it's been in place for quite some time. It's had some, you know, edits through time, but it's been in place for a while.
What is the timeframe if Coach Cook was to fight this?
So, so what you, essentially, what the resolution is saying is having you take action related to the recommendation of non-renewal or not, that's your choice. If, if you decide not to renew as a board, then this letter that is attached will be sent. And then that letter sort of, as Gary read it, outlines what the process is in terms of requesting or not requesting a hearing. To hear the, well, first you have to hear the reasons, then you would have the opportunity once heard those reasons to be able to appeal in terms of a hearing.
And that hearing may or may be private or public?
At, at the discretion of the individual. Always, always is going to be, personal private data is going to be discussed without others. That would be a, you know, would be a closed session.
I also want to comment and thank all the people in the public that have sent messages to me. I've read every single one, replied to every single one, so thank you very much.
Hey, any other questions for Keith over here?
No, but I have some comments.
I do, too. When I guess that question, like, how are we supposed to make a decision on this without any information or? No, I mean, we don't have any details. We haven't seen the file, so I don't understand how we can make this call in this situation. I mean, if I'm put in a fast at work, I'm putting on tape, and I haven't heard any reference of that situation. And obviously, that's based on performance and his record. We're not, we're not questioning his record.
I would reply by saying, you know, unfortunately, data privacy laws prohibit us from sharing information. Everybody that sent an email to me got that applied for me, and that goes for the board as well until the level of a hearing. So, yeah, again, that explains that, that process.
I think the, you know, the, the, the action before you is not a disciplinary action. It's a non-renewal.
And by, and by taking this action, as was already articulated with our Matt, that sets the wheels in motion should Coach desire to advance this for a hearing for us to actually have an open dialogue with respect to, to your point, Tony, the whys. This isn't, this isn't conclusive action. This just arguably begins the process to have an open discussion.
Well, I think, just to be clear, you are, you would take action to non-renew.
Sure.
What, the letter would be sent saying there is a non-renewal. So whatever action you take tonight will determine whether that letter gets sent that way or not. Then there is the option in the legislator, in the legislation to be, to have a hearing. There's not an obligation to have an outcome related to that hearing. There's just an obligation to have a hearing in which point, you know, there would be an open discussion, and it could be closed, or it could, could be open. If by chance that conversation gets to a point where it resolves into, or evolves into some sort of private matter, private data, then you would be forced to go into a closed session during that particular, you know, hearing.
Sure. By the same token, it also doesn't preclude, if that process were to play out, us as a board or as a district extending a new contract?
No, absolutely.
Okay, I want to make sure there's clarity that this, so that's what I mean. This isn't definitive, where this isn't the end necessarily.
No, you could always, I mean, you, you're the, you're the school board. You could always make a decision. However, you could make one decision and come back and make a different decision at any particular.
So to Tony's point about not knowing full context, not knowing, we could, at that point in time, use that as our vehicle to make our decision with a full slate of knowledge.
Right.
Is that what the appeal hearing would, if you were to hear from Coach, if you were to hear?
I, you have to reverse. You know, the, the, the situation, though, is, and it's always a situation, you can, individuals can talk about themselves and what their situation is. Organizations often, because of private personal data, can't talk about everything publicly. So the, the district would, upon request, be able to give its reasons, but it wouldn't be, you know, it wouldn't be public data. We would give that to the individual. So, you know, even in a hearing scenario, there could be a, what most people might think of as an open dialogue because there's personal data that you may have knowledge that you don't want to become public because we are a public entity and we have a public meeting, so there, there is a certain amount of that that just can't occur. And that's always the, always the case in these kinds of situations.
And for example, you know, when Amanda asks us for data requests, a lot of times there are a lot of, you know, black lines all the way through things because we're not able to give that information due to data privacy laws.
Go ahead.
All right. So like the rest of you guys, I'm sure I've, I've thought a lot about this. Certainly received many of the same emails and calls and notes and such. I don't support this resolution, and I won't support it, and I'll tell you why. And I think it's important that the board at least hear my thinking on this. Let me start by saying something I think we probably all agree on. I'll make that assumption. This is not about wins and losses and records and championships. This isn't about a popularity contest. This is not about how many letters we got and what have you. It's about doing the right thing and doing it in the right way. The administration's made this decision to non-renew and per state statute seeking for our validation of that. So we're following a state mandated process specifically for head coaches. I want everybody to understand that. Especially, I've read that, as you probably did too, read the statute. I take issue with the process. Not the district, I take issue with the process, the state. My hands are tied, but I feel like I need to say this. Not the part that says that a head coach cannot be, can be non-renewed purely based upon personal complaints. I fully support that. I don't think that's enough of a reason, especially in our day and age when we just love to complain. So I don't, I don't have a problem with that. But it's before the head coach can even ask for the reasons for their non-renewal or seek a hearing, they have to go through the process of being formally non-renewed and appeal to the same board that just took the action. That's backwards. I'd like to say something else, actually, but it's backwards, if you ask me. And it's not the district's choice. It's not mine. It's a state process, and we are where we are, but I don't like the process. So as a result of this, we've had no chances, of course, this is what Tony talked about. We've had no chances of board to discuss this or converse on this topic. We've barely heard one side. We certainly haven't heard any rebuttal to it, and yet we're being asked to validate this non-renewal in the absence of a full and complete understanding. Now, that said, I'm typically going to be very deferential and have been to administration. This is what you guys are tasked with doing. This is squarely in your wheelhouse, but this feels more to me like a lack of due process, if anything. So based upon the information that I have, combined with the lack of opportunity to discuss its merits, along with my own personal and family experience with the coach in this case, I don't support the non-renewal decision. Let me be very clear, that could change, especially with more information, the chance to discuss this, if in fact that's where we proceed. But as I said at the beginning, I believe it's about doing the right thing in the right way. I do not believe this is the right way. Some of that's really the fault of the state. It's not the district. I'm not pointing the fingers at the district for the process. But I haven't received sufficient information or justification to support this, so I do not support it.
Gary, is it possible for us to have more information prior to, is this a step that has to be taken at this point, approving this tonight? Or can we have more information before making?
Again.
A blind decision?
It is not possible.
Can I ask that, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I guess I don't understand why we, as a board, on a personal matter, couldn't call a closed session to discuss the data that's in question, so we have an understanding. We haven't done that, and that may have been time constraint, or maybe we're actually prohibited, but I don't know why we couldn't do that. Or are we simply, must we wait, go through this backward process of actually formally non-renewing to allow the request to be made?
I think you can always call a session.
Okay, so we could.
On a personal matter.
Okay, we could.
But can we be given the information to discuss?
Yeah.
Before the coach says, before Mr. Couillard were to say, I want to have this information discussed or up in the open or relay it to the board, we can have that information?
I think you'd have to have a closed session to be able to have the kind of conversation I think you want.
I think what she's asking is, because the data is protected, even if we're in a closed session, can we have it?
I believe you can, because you're, you're the ultimate, you're the ultimate supervisor.
That's, I feel like, the step we skipped, and I wonder, too, again, not making any presumptions, but if we could do something like that, would we be able to have, in light of the fact it's about an individual, would we be able to have that individual party to that conversation to be able to discuss and rebut or answer questions, or is it just the board? Do you know? And maybe the answer is we can't because we'd have to discuss maybe the complaints or the issues that got to this point.
Well, you know, when you, when you introduce anybody into a board's closed session, you have, I believe you want to know that that isn't going anything further, and that's why it's a closed session. That's why you guys don't have closed sessions. And that's why you didn't have the closed session related to Gary's, you know, review public. So I think whenever you introduce somebody new to you, then you have less control over that data that you discuss. So I, I would never recommend you to have a closed session with others than yourself and administration that you're, that you're talking about with, so I, I don't know, but it'd be, I mean, you're the board. You could do what you want.
Well, again, that's where, that's where I fault the process because, and I respect the fact, you know this, Keith, because this is your career, but if we did that, we might be able to have a better insight, and that feels good. I feel like we're missing it. We're not going to have a chance for rebuttal because we wouldn't have somebody, namely Coach, there to say, okay, here's my side of the story. So it sounds like the only way for that to happen is to go through this cockamamie non-renewal, and then he requests the hearing, but then again, the hearing, the individual can request it be opened. Okay, fine, if they're willing to have that happen, but the minute we want to talk about personal data, we can't. It's a catch-22. I mean, this is, this is so screwy that I don't support it like that.
Reggie, I couldn't agree with you more about the state mandated process, right? For a couple of reasons, not the least of which is that what you articulated as a board, right? I mean, we would be essentially, you know, making a decision, then we'd hear the facts after, and then we'd be reversing our, potentially reversing ourselves, right? Which, I guess, in this case, because of what you just outlined, is why I support this, because it at least gives us that opportunity of Coach were to pursue it, for us to hear everything as a group, discuss as a group, hear more sides to it. That's why I support this, because it, that, that's how we open that door. The other reason I support this is because it is a recommendation from our administration that I believe, from what I know as the personnel chair, has been, has been put through a thorough process. I'm trusting that Keith, as an HR professional, has experienced, has mitigated risk, made sure that the process was, was thorough and accurate. And right now, this is my, I'm trusting Keith, I'm trusting Gary, and I'm trusting others that have been involved because I don't have all the facts that I can't get in my, in my mind until we go through this process. Do I like this process? No. I'd like to add some adjectives to the adjectives you wanted to use. This process just makes us far too cognizant, and the access to the information and the ability to have a dialogue isn't there until we go through this process. So that's, I'm equally frustrated, but.
Yeah, it's, it's two sides at the same point.
Yeah. Go ahead.
So, I mean, I think, I think what, what you have to be, I mean, if you're, you can conduct, you can conduct meetings, and you can conduct social. I think Gary was, you can conduct closed sessions the way you want to conduct them. I think when you look at, when you look at this situation, again, this isn't, this isn't a for cause action from an HR perspective. I just want to make that really clear here. We're not making a case. We didn't, we're not trying to do that. This is, I realize there are really a lot of circumstances around it, but this is a non-renewal of a coaching position. But it's not, you know, it's not a mount up all the evidence and terminate somebody. That's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about a non-renewal. So I just want to make sure that we talk in that way and we understand if that's what it is. And I know people can evaluate it and look at it differently, but that's, you know, that's what this resolution is talking about.
I understand what you mean by making a case, absolutely, but that's kind of what we have to do. I mean, I don't think that we would summarily agree without feeling that there was a case.
Sure.
I think we've all received several emails. I've tried to, like Gary replied to all of them. And there's been a lot of great things, a lot of inspiring things. And there's been a lot of great things, a lot of inspiring things, and some that have been less than flattering. So I don't want to get into that, but I, obviously, this is somebody who's made an impact in several people, like you talked about in your own family, in several people's lives. And so I'd rather err on the side of being able to have a full and robust conversation as a board at some point in time. And to me, this is the only way we get there.
Any comments?
At the risk of, you know, repeating what everybody else has already said, I do think this process is not ideal. No matter how you look at this, there's no good way to do this. By not respecting the recommendation of the administration, we should arguably go back and take a look at every other contract that didn't have to come forward on the resolution to question that. I don't like the fact that we have to highlight any particular position and elevate it to the point of resolution to not move forward with something when there could be lord knows how many dozens of people that we might have all agreed should have been renewed on something else. We'll never get the benefit of that conversation, that ship sailed. So for me, what's the lesser of two evils? Approving the resolution, adopting it, so that the process can be opened up, should Coach desire to do that, which then gives us some sort of arena, if you will, to have the conversation? Again, should he decide to do that? Or we disagree with the recommendation provided by administration, suggest that we know more than they do, and then whatever else is going on is allowed to continue going on? I don't like that either. That doesn't feel good to me. So I'll tell you flat out, I'm going to respect the recommendation of administration. Doesn't mean I have to like the process, but if it opens the door to have another conversation, I want that opportunity, assuming the coach wants that opportunity. And I'll let the public know, you know, for those that emailed or reached out or called or whatever, I very specifically did not reach out, reach back in this case, because to me, it was the cart before the horse. Because of the process, it would have been inappropriate for me to engage. Yeah, I could say I acknowledge the email, but that's not meaningful quite frankly. I did not want to get in front of the process. And although the process is not ideal, it is the process whether we like it or not. And so therefore, I'm going to vote in favor of the process.
We could have a closed session to discuss this, one sided, but we could do that. So I don't feel like we are as holktight as we feel like. We all don't like the process.
If I actually thought that that would yield something meaningful, I'd probably be right with you. I just, I think I'd rather have it with, if we're going to have a session, I'd rather have the party there.
Well, that's why I asked what I asked. And I don't know if there's a good answer to having them there or not, and I can see reasons why we wouldn't. But this is messed up for a lot of reasons, not responsible of the district at all, not at all. And I know why the recommendation, I get why the recommendation's brought forward. I just don't support the process, and I don't support the recommendation at this time.
Other comments? If not, there is a recommendation that has been put forth. We'll need a motion and a second in order to advance it and take a vote.
I'll have a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, further discussion? All those in favor of the recommendation as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Well, same sign?
No.
Motion carried. All right, let's move on to item number 12, other. Sarah, was there any write ads? And in the interest of time, and we've got a lot of people here, I'm going to forego going around the horn. Committee reports, committee updates that are material?
Finance committee met today, we'll be talking about the annual budget, so you're all in the deal.
Other committee reports? All of us are well aware of it. Okay, let's go ahead and move on to item number 14, the recognition of visitors to the board meeting. And again, I recognize this late, and I thank everybody for your patience. My hope for those that are here to speak about the coach, my only ask is that you recognize the interesting process we have to follow here and that that would guide whatever comments that you might choose to make.
Is it a two-minute or a three-minute?
Uh, two-minute, yeah.
Ken?
So anyone interested can just come up, sign into the court, and sit down.
You might have to sign in if you could state your name, and we've got a microphone here to catch you with.
Hi, my name is David Flum. I'm the head boys' basketball coach at Eden Prairie. I also teach fifth grade there. My mom was on the school board in Cannon Falls, where I grew up for many years, so I respect the work that you do. And obviously, you guys put in a lot of work. Emotional topic, so there's several coaches that wrote a letter. We put a letter together, I think all of you received it. I just want to read it aloud, if that's acceptable with you. So to whom it may concern, we are writing in regard to the recent termination of Shakopee High School Boys Basketball Coach Bruce Kuya. Bruce has been a model coach for us, and we are writing to ask the board to reconsider their decision to terminate his coaching contract. As high school basketball coaches, we have the privilege of leading young men, and with this honor comes many challenges. Bruce has clearly demonstrated how to compete at the highest level, and he's done it with integrity. In addition, he has led the way in regard to running a youth program successfully. Most importantly, Bruce has modeled how to treat the game, players, officials, and opposing coaches with integrity and with class. Bruce is an exceptional coach. In terms of coaching ability, Bruce got more out of his team's talents and abilities than nearly any other coach in the state. Bruce is nearly, is clearly in the top 5% of all basketball coaches in the state of Minnesota. As recently as four years ago, he led his team to the memorable state semifinal, where his team went to four overtimes against a far superior talented team. Bruce has consistently produced top-level teams. His success has been recognized and is demonstrated by many accomplishments. He is a member of the Minnesota State Coaches High School Hall of Fame, accumulated over 500 wins, named to the Minnesota State Coach of the Year, and named Section Coach of the Year several times. While Bruce's successes in tangible aspects of coaching like wins and losses is impressive, what is more impressive is the impact that Bruce has made in the lives of his athletes. High school athletics are about so much more than wins and losses. High school athletics teaches young athletes skills that are essential to life after basketball. Bruce and his program have shined in this regard. He has taught discipline, determination, grit, passion, teamwork, and servitude to each of his players. As a group of coaches who are also fathers, we have agreed that we would be thrilled if our own children had the opportunity to play for Bruce. Bruce believes in teaching life lessons through basketball. There is a concern in trend in many basketball programs to hire coaches who are only concerned with wins and losses. While that may work in the short term, coaching with young athletes is a long-term enterprise. What do we want for these young men when basketball ends and life begins? As experienced coaches, we realize that it's about so much more than winning. Bruce has always understood that his players are better human beings, understood this, and they're better human beings because of it. He's managed to do this while turning out teams that have made Shakopee High School very proud. So we ask you to please reconsider your decision. Sincerely, David Flum, Eden Prairie, Zach Loring, Apple Valley, Dana Coleman, Chaska, John Oxton, Lakeville North, Craig Hubling, Red Wing, Bob Vaughn, Bram, Barry Wooler, Orono, Joe Berger, Edina, and Jeff Evans, Bloomington Jefferson. I'm sure my time is up.
Yeah, your time is up.
But I just want to say, as I look at those slides and the beautiful school, I just want to implore that if and when there's an opportunity for another coach that maybe has experience, and what a great opportunity to come to Shakopee. My thought is, the process that I'm aware of that went through and the leadership, I would have real questions and concerns about whether or not I, for one, would say, "I want to go join that program because of the leadership and how this process went through." And it's actually a wonderful opportunity for somebody, but that's something to be really considerable, consider as you go through with how this went through. So if you've got a high-level coach that would be considered in this district, it would cause me, for example, to have a great pause before I would make that decision.
Thank you.
Thanks, David.
I appreciate the letter. My ask, though, just, you were the leadoff batter for that school. Let's keep it to the two minutes, we've got a big room.
You were speaking for seven or eight people.
Exactly, which is why I want to finish up.
Only a two-minute mark.
Ladies and gentlemen on the board, my name is Brian Somas, and I graduated from Shakopee High School in 2005. Ooh, heart rate's racing, sorry. During that time, I had the privilege of playing basketball under Coach Kuya for several years, and ultimately helped bring a state championship home to our program. Not only did Bruce and I have success on the basketball court, we've also built a friendship that has lasted for almost two decades. He is a man I have respected throughout that time, and I've appreciated everything he's done for me and the Shakopee basketball program. I was asked today to speak on behalf of Shakopee alumni basketball team to support Bruce through this process and hopes he'll be given a chance to peer the decision you have made tonight. I do believe he has earned a chance to give reasons why he should remain with the program. You'll be losing a great man who has dedicated more time and energy into a program than any other coach in the school's history. A man of passion, a man who cares for every athlete he's ever coached. A man who has higher expectations for his players than many teachers, friends, teammates, and even parents have for their own children. Bruce is a tough coach, I'll admit that. He was tough on us as he is tough on his athletes now. But Bruce's toughness comes with love and passion for the sport, but most importantly, for his athletes. His toughness held me well beyond the basketball court. His values, which I see reflected directly in myself, have helped me accomplish goals that at one point in my life only dreams. I hope that your decision today is not final. I hope that you can listen to people supporting Bruce here and now, as well as the countless players who are still unaware of this process. Remember that these people are not only supporting him, but the program he self-built. His coaching staff, sorry. His coaching staff, for years, a remarkable service. His family, for being understanding of the time commitment he's given, and to the many alumni who have gone to battle for more than a few years. Bruce wants only to have the best basketball program in the state. Please consider him as he applies for the head coach position. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
All right, a couple of things, guys. One is, I will.
Your name?
Yes, Dutchman, excuse me. A couple of things. One is, I'm not going to make a promise I can't keep, so the two-minute thing, just give me a little bit of slack on that, because my relationship to this city and to Coach cannot be encapsulated in two minutes. And I'm going to read out my phone, so bear with me. Before I read this, I just want to say that this is my first board meeting I've ever been to. To be honest, I've never really followed it or cared. I now have three children that are starting to enter, the oldest into the school district, and I take a lot of pride in the city and my experiences here. And I appreciate the professionalism that you guys have displayed. The short time I've been here, the questions, the process, I understand it is a tough spot, and I respect that a lot of you guys, and I thank you for your consideration. First of all, I want to thank you guys for the opportunity to speak here. I've not had the pleasure of meeting you all or talking to all of you yet. However, I look forward to doing so. I'll be open to any follow-up questions or comments you guys may have. I'm here to show support and validate that Coach is an outstanding member of the Shakopee community through his educational contributions as a teacher and specifically as a basketball coach for the past 25 years. I've had the privilege to not only be coached by him, but also a student graduating from Shakopee in 2001. He's a very special person who's given a significant chunk of his life to the development of children through the sport of basketball. We can all agree that community positions such as being a high school coach are not always easy. They tend to be very time-consuming, and they're not particularly high paying. And I appreciate all of those who serve greatly. For Coach K and many others, it's a passion for developing young kids through the sport of basketball and the reward of seeing them grow, succeed, learn the countless life lessons derived from participating. For me, it was lessons learned such as work ethic, sacrifice, what it means to put the team first, dedication, focus, determination, fortitude that have served me well as I've gotten older. And it isn't just me that's gained these life lessons, you guys. Thousands in the community have either played directly under Coach K or participated in what he helped build, the flagship athletic program over the years. Okay? This is never more evident that our very strong alumni network and our holiday tradition to come together in support of Coach K and the program through a basketball tournament broken up by graduating class. It's what we do to give back, it's what binds us together. Coach K, basketball, our teammates, and an unrealistic desire to bring back some of our former years. And let me tell you, we're reminded by our body's response in the weeks after that time keeps ticking along regardless of what our mind seems to think. Maybe we keep coming back because consistently Coach K is still there, helping organize and support the alumni, and there's a new crop of graduates that are naively ready and excited to join the special alumni group, and all that comes with that. It would be a tragedy for us as a community to take a celebrated key contributor who's sacrificed and given so much for so long to discard them without serious objective consideration and due diligence by more than a few. As an aside, I really respect you guys asking the question and questioning, "How do I make a decision without the information in front of me? And how does that stop the process? Should we come potentially to a similar conclusion?" There would still be an opportunity for us to do that, so thank you for that.
Where, can you line it up quick, please?
Yeah. Again, I promise, so. In the last however months, though, our community has fallen on unprecedented and tumultuous times that has never, ever been experienced by my family with a six-plus generation since coming over here from Germany to settle and call Shakopee and its surrounding area home. It has caused our neighboring communities in the metro area to look at Shakopee in a different light. And candidly, it's given me pause when talking privately about our community and the decision that I made to come back after graduating college and have my family raised here. I still have faith on this board to do and right the ship and bring Shakopee and its educational program up to its proper order. The upward progress continues here today and through sensible approaches. I'm almost done. Affording a longstanding community contributor, Coach K, who is not only recognized in this community but statewide for his achievements, a careful, deliberate, objective, and transparent review of decision not to retain this coach, to hopefully recognize and retain a beacon that has Shakopee synonymous with excellence when it comes to our basketball program. And finally, we not only owe this to anyone, excuse me, we owe this to anyone who has served our community so well for so long, but as mentioned before, to also show those future contributors considering Shakopee that it's worthy to serve. Thank you, and thank you for your patience.
Thanks, Josh.
Jason Porst. I wanted to take the opportunity to address the board in support of Bruce Kuya, the Ted Basketball Coach. You've just heard from coaches' peers in the high school coaching sector, and you've heard from a couple of members of our alumni. I want to take this chance to address the board as the parent of a current player in the program. You can see here from the people that showed up, from the letters that you've received, from the words that these people have stated tonight, that there are a number of people here that support Coach Kuya. And we're, I guess, in the process of becoming to understand the process that we as a community need to go through, that you guys need to figure out. Definitely respect the process, even more respect you guys having the conversation about how the process might not be right and the goal of trying to do the right thing. So I really appreciate that. And I guess I really look forward to the opportunity to have Coach request that public hearing and for you guys to be able to hear. and for you guys to be able to hear all sides of the story to make the best decision for Shakopee. I've known Coach Kuyat for a long time, during his entire tenure as head basketball coach at Shakopee. I know him to be a fiery competitor and a coach that holds his players accountable. I believe that in some respects, Coach Kuyat has changed over the past 25 years as all coaches do. But in many respects, in those core areas, he's still the same coach. A coach that cares greatly about the community, about the Shakopee basketball program, and most importantly, needs players. As I mentioned before, I'm concerned, as many people are here, about how this has come to be. How a coach that's won a state championship, a two-time state coach of the year, a ten-time section coach of the year, a member of Shakopee's Hall of Fame, a member of the Minnesota Coaches Hall of Fame, could be on this list of this contract not being... I appreciate the conversation and I look forward to Coach having his opportunity to share his side of the story with you guys. And thank you for going through the process.
My name is Bob Tekken. Been on the school board from 1990 to 1996. Been involved with the Shakopee youth boys' basketball program for 46 years. Spent the last 25 years working with Coach Kuyat, one of the finest basketball coaches in the state of Minnesota. As everybody says, he's Hall of Fame coach. He's in the Shakopee Hall of Fame. He works with our youth program from grade one through the high school program. He's just a tireless worker. My son, Terry Tekken, was his assistant for 12 years. And from being under Coach Kuyat for 12 years, he was fortunate enough to become a head coach first at Wollato, Minnesota, and now at Delano, Minnesota. Everything that Terry Tekken does, he probably learned from Coach Kuyat. And Coach Kuyat won a state championship in 2005. Terry Tekken won a state championship in 2018 at Delano High School. We will never, ever find a coach that wants to work as hard as Coach Kuyat. He loves the game of basketball. He loves Shakopee. He loves the kids of Shakopee. He goes to, if you guys would go around when we have our second grade program in-house, third and fourth grade, Coach Kuyat's there. He takes notes of all the kids. Then he goes home and he sends letters to these kids about what a great night they had playing in-house basketball. Some of those kids I've talked to, they're seniors, they still have the letter on their bulletin board. So whatever you do, please consider that we keep Coach Kuyat as the basketball coach until he decides it's time for him to retire as... He just deserves that opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Wrong name, excuse me. Do I have to take my hat off?
Good evening, board. Jeff Jonkowski, Shakopee grad, 1989. Spent 10 years coaching under Bruce Kuyat. I also am the only one in this room that can proudly say that I didn't only play for Coach Kuyat, I also coached under Coach Kuyat, and I have officiated a game or many for Coach Kuyat. And every place that I have been for this man, whether I was a young kid, a young punk kid that probably knew better than Coach Kuyat, up to coaching under Coach Kuyat and officiating for Coach Kuyat, he has done nothing but been very supportive, very fair, and very appreciative of my efforts all the time. Everybody has kind of said, you know, we've kind of said the same thing tonight, and I know you've all heard it and can appreciate what we have in our love for Coach Kuyat. I ask maybe in a different way that some of you on this board, I strongly believe, don't know Bruce Kuyat. And I think you should really get to know Bruce Kuyat before you really go and make an unbelievable decision like this, in my opinion. You're taking a legacy away from a gentleman who has basically formed basketball in the city of Shakopee. This man is basketball in Shakopee. And I just don't believe that a decorated coach like this, this is how we get a guy to leave the coaching field. I mean, I just think of coaches that have been in, you know, Sheshevsky's and all these coaches of the world that have been there for so long. You think that something like this is going to take them away from their legacy of coaching whichever, wherever they've been coaching. I just don't think it's a proper decision in a way to do this. I think all the facts need to be proven. I think it needs to be legit. And I really believe that hearing the facts and making sure that it is the proper way of doing this is the proper way to go. I respect what you do. My wife is on a board. I know what she goes through. It's not easy. She comes home in tears sometimes and it's very, very tough. I understand that I have not been on board, but I have to go through and listen and feel for her what she does. So I know your decisions can't be easy, but please just get all the facts straight and make sure that this decision is based upon that and not just the process, so to speak. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Chris Cronin. I'm currently a teacher in the district. I'm also a coach here. I had the pleasure to play for Coach Kooks for a few years in high school. And, you know, as an employee of the district, I know one thing that we strive for as employees that are involved in the community in more ways than just that one job. When I was working at Jackson Elementary, I consistently saw Coach Kooks in the building, volunteering, giving up his time to help enrich the lives of the kids, to help teachers, help the district, basically any way that he can. As you can see with the amount of people here, letters, everything, he has a lot of support. You know, I didn't prepare anything today. Just came up to speak from the heart. You know, he's touched my life in more ways than one. He helped give me letters of recommendation for college. I didn't think I was going to go to college. Ended up going. Now I'm a teacher. Gave me the opportunity to coach. I see the impact that he's made in this community from kids five, six years old up and through high school and beyond. You know, those are the type of people that you want to keep in a district. He is really enriching the lives of many, many people in this district. It's not just basketball or sports related either. So also, one other thing I'd just say, this termination or whatever, non-renewal of his contract, if it's not based off of any behavior or anything like that, then what's the point in terminating? Right? Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Does it start when I sit down?
No.
I'm used to a seven-minute talk and half...
Keep your whiteboard, too.
My name is Bruce Kuyat. I came to Shakopee in 1974 as a Spanish teacher and a coach of three sports. Over that time, in the 40-some years that I've coached, I've coached thousands of kids and taught thousands of kids. I've dealt with hundreds of parents. And over those years, I'll be the first to admit I've made many mistakes like we all do because we're human. I've learned from my mistakes and I believe once you make a mistake, if you learn from it, you're a better person. Three and a half months ago, this process started and I've accepted the fact that how tonight's vote would go and I was very pleased to see the discussion. But I was actually told by HR at a meeting on May 16th that the school board supported the fact that I would not be renewed. So I've dealt with that. Tonight should be probably the lowest point of my career because my career is now over. Something I've loved for over 40 years, my career is now over. Okay, there's people to agree on whatever they have to agree on to change your decision. People have to admit they're wrong and that's not going to happen, okay? I don't think you're going to admit you're wrong once you've made this decision. And it should be a sad night for me, but it's not because I look around this room. I have my family here. I have my friends here. I have former players here. And it tells me, what I was preaching to those kids all along, they've become what I wanted them to be, great men with courage. And that's what makes me feel really proud. Because Shakopee High School, it's not about the school board. It's not about the superintendent. It's about these kids behind us that are now men. And I'm proud of them and I'm proud to know them and I'm proud to have coached them. And the last thing I want to say, this has been a three-and-a-half-month terrible situation for my family. Never once have I been asked by a school board member, by the superintendent, by anyone, what's my side? No one has ever asked me that. And this will be the last time you'll probably see me, but I thank you for listening.
My name's Scott Burkey. I wasn't planning on talking tonight. We had some people that were all set to talk. We didn't want to take up a bunch of your time. But I'll be honest with you, this is embarrassing that we are here. This is embarrassing for anybody that's been through this program or knows this. I challenge any one of you to take a group of 60 kids, tell 30 of them they can't play, take 12 of them and say you can play on the varsity. I'm upset right now. I had to sit through the worst two hours of my life this morning.
You don't have to use your hands.
12 people that they can make the team, seven of you might play. Well, what do you think 53 other people are? They're mad. They're upset. They're complaining to the athletic director and the superintendent and the principal. That's every sport, every coach. Why this time are we going through something like this? This doesn't make any sense. I am frustrated. I'm very frustrated and this is embarrassing. We went through a bombshell a year ago because we didn't question administration. Well, now I'm asking each of you to question administration and find out why are we here today? Because this is not right for the community. This is not right for anybody. My phone is going off the hook right now, anybody sitting next to me, because of everybody wanting to know what's going on that couldn't be here tonight. We would have jammed an entire auditorium if this would have been held during the school year, another time where people could be available. We know that there's a lot of people in every sport that get upset, their kids don't play, they're going to complain. But I want to know, when this is all done, did we go through the same process with every coach in every sport all the time? Trust me, I've talked to a lot of coaches. It is not the same process. I'm just asking you to please do your due diligence and let's right this wrong. Sorry, I got a little upset. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Charles Catona. I am a current player on the Shakopee varsity team and I've known Coach Kuyat for a long time. And personally, I've really, really enjoyed getting letters from Coach Kuyat and like actually getting home and just wanting to open a letter from him because it means so much to me that like throughout all my years that he's been watching and that he actually supports us at such a young age and supports us all throughout our career. And I'm going into my junior year and just playing for him is a real privilege. Like, I don't know if any other coach can push me as hard as he does. He, yes, he does get on me, but I know that's the only way to give me better. That's, it's part of the game. It's part of basketball. You're going to get yelled at. It happens, but you have to get over it and it's just the only way to get you better. And that's my biggest concern is that I don't, I don't know if there's another coach that can really push me and work me as hard as Coach Kuyat can. And that's, I just ask that you really take him to consideration that he is one of the best coaches I've ever had. And that's it. Thank you.
My name's Brian Snell. Current teacher, current coach for the last 25 years. Under Coach K, played for Coach K. Grew up in Shakopee. All three of my boys are playing basketball right now. Not going to repeat what everybody else has said about Coach. There's no reason to do that. There's too many things that I could sit here and talk about him about. There's so much for everybody in this community. You have no idea. It would take you days to hear about all the things he does for the kids that are in this town. I just don't understand how anybody is even questioning what he does for our community. I don't care if anybody thought there was some kind of mistake or if something wasn't done right. There's too much equity with him. You're losing somebody that you can't afford to lose at this point. I don't know how else to explain this as a current employee. I wanted to be a head coach someday. This is what you have to go through to be a head coach. There's no way I want to be a head coach, ever. If this kind of guy's got to go through this, there's no way I want to be a head coach, ever. Guy does more stuff for people than you could ever imagine. There's five people in this room that could sit here and tell you about it and you don't want to hear about it anymore because you've been here all day and I respectfully thank you for that. But we couldn't, we couldn't begin to even describe what he does for this community. Personally, I just have to leave you with one story, just so you know what kind of guy this is. My brother died 20 years ago in a drunk driving accident. And besides the police officer that told me about it, that guy was there and he told me about it. He found me and told me that my brother had passed away. Not my mom and dad, not my brother and sister. The guy who used to coach me, the guy with my head coach. 3:30 in the morning, he found where I was at. I wasn't at home. found where I was at, I wasn't at home, and he found me. He came with that police officer, and he told me that my brother had passed away in an accident. I'm his assistant coach, for like four years only. He's my former coach, not so much he cares about people. To sit here and think that he has to even go through a process to be a head job, head basketball job, he's retired, donates every second of his time to the kids of this community, every second, donates to everybody that's sitting behind me and the hundreds of alumni and thousands of people he touches. I just ask you that you think and consider all that stuff when you have to make this decision on him again. This is a mistake. You don't get rid of people like that, you just don't. Thank you.
My name is Ken Cordus. Bruce is a friend of mine. He's been a friend of mine since he moved to Shakopee. You heard all the things that have been said from the other people that are here. But I want to get on one of the points you mentioned about the process. I was a teacher for 35 years, and one of the things that kept me coming back and enjoying the profession is the administrators use the cliche "had my back." And I knew that the decisions that I made, and there's thousands that teachers make, instantaneous decisions, sometimes you make bad ones. Hopefully, most of the time you make good ones. But when I made bad ones, my administrators screened me from the public, maybe unfairly, criticizing or whatever, and then if I needed to be dealt with, I was dealt with. Hopefully, a person that's a coach gets numerous criticisms, fairly and unfairly. Hopefully, people in this community, the administration, people who are responsible, can find out what the facts are, as mentioned earlier, and then make the decision.
Okay, I want to thank everybody for their comments. We're going to go ahead and close out the recognition of decisions in the board meeting section, move on to item 15, upcoming meetings and important dates. We've got this coming Wednesday, and our school board retreat is July the 9th, and then rest of the information on there you can see. I would like to go ahead and move on to item number 16, that is, what's your name?
It's Boog.
I'm Aysa.
Nice. Follow the paper, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign, we are adjourned.